And I'll be taking it back for a second reading. There were a couple of minor language changes, but it will be going back to the council for a second reading next council meeting, which is May the 4th and will be effective 30 days after their approval of that. So, and thank you to Linda and Judy for your help. You were my ad hoc committee. We worked really hard and there were some delays once we looked at all of our policies and looked at the municipal code, but I finally, we finally got to a place and the council was in a place to, to hear this item. So, thank you both for your hard work on that.
It was, it was good to hear, hear those policies again because I think it was over a year that we were, well, yeah, obviously it was more than a year, but it was almost like a year and a half since we had to address that. So, thank you. Great job.
When that's, when that becomes final, I'll have an abbreviated, I think, policy, C 1601 to bring to you guys to look at. And then a policy regarding the use of our community spaces, in particular, right now, Vistalobos, or I was thinking Vistalobos because that was open pre pandemic, but that will need to be cleaned up as part of policy C 1601. So, you'll be seeing that coming from me in the next couple of months.
And Ashley, could you just give us a brief recap on where we are with the Forest Theater? Is that, it's on the agenda. Thanks.
Yes, so the Forest Theater request for proposals was released to the public. It is on the homepage of the city's website, ci.carmel.ca.us. All of the information that you need to submit a proposal is on there. There's a mandatory pre walk through next Friday, April 23rd, and proposals are due in May. And we have a question and answer period that is open. The questions are due to the city by April, Friday, April the 30th, after that walkthrough. And then let me double check my Forest Theater proposal due date. But that is continuing apace. I don't have anything to report on that front because proposals aren't due until May. So, nothing's been submitted yet and I don't anticipate anything being submitted until after that walkthrough occurs.
Can anyone go on the walkthrough?
Yes, that is open to the public. But I will note that if you are participating in the walkthrough, you will need to observe all of the COVID safety protocols, social distancing, masking, if you are to participate in that.
And what time is that on the 23rd?
Begins at 10:00 AM.
All right. All right, I guess it's time for public appearances. Anyone with anything not on today's agenda can step forward. Nancy, I see Nancy waving her hand. Hi Nancy.
Good morning. Yeah, just wanted to remind folks that CRA hosts a community wide open to the public beach cleanup on the third Saturday of every month. So, the next one is this coming Saturday on the 17th. And for instance, in March, we do March through October, third Saturday of the month, and from nine until noon, or you know, as soon as the crowds disperse. And the, our next one again is on Saturday. And we get, you know, last one had about 36, 37 people join us. A lot of the high school students looking to add hours to their community contribution. So, that's a neat little gathering that others might be not aware of, but we publicize it on Facebook and in the other CRA communications. We will also be at the farmer's market again. We're on the, the cycle pending other tweaks for the last Thursday of the month that we'll have the CRA table where we hand out shopping bags and chat with folks about what's going on. So, thanks very much for all of that. And then I actually did have a question for Ashley. I don't think it's on the agenda, any expectations on when library is going to open, but you can answer that when it fits.
Thank you Nancy. Anyone else wishing to speak from the public? Okay, let's, orders of business, receive a presentation from the Carmel Foundation. That will be good.
Thank you. I appreciate being invited today. I am Holly Zoller, the president, CEO of the Carmel Foundation. And I was asked just to give an update on where the foundation is. You know, about a year ago before the pandemic hit, I was set to do a presentation at the city council and I was going to actually present to all of you as well, kind of giving you a history of the foundation. I'm finding that even the people that live here don't quite get the full picture of what the foundation is and what we do. So, just real quick, the Carmel Foundation was incorporated as a nonprofit in 1950. So, we are now, this month, at 71 years old. We started off as just a very small campus and a home where people came and gathered. Our Wednesday programs started in the 1950s, wood carving group, needle craft group. A lot of the classes that are still really popular today actually started in the 50s. And then in the 60s, we added our low income housing for seniors, eventually building up to 50 apartments. Those are all over by the post office. So, we have people that live in those apartments, the ones that have been grandfathered in, have rents as low as $300 a month up from there based on income. So, those apartments really have stayed, obviously, the one constant in the pandemic is we are still servicing all 50 apartments, staff to be there, housekeeper, facilities, all of that. On campus here, I call it the campus. We're on the corner of Eighth and Lincoln. There's four buildings here and when we're open, we generally do 60 plus classes and activities every week. So, we're a bustling campus. We have a library, a garden center, a tech center, multi-use rooms that just get turned on an hourly basis to accommodate more classes. So, we have, we have real, like a philosophy class, we have discussion groups, we have a memoirs writing class, Tai Chi, Qi Gong, you know, all of the, I mean, every gamut that you can imagine. And a field cafe where we see, serve muffins and coffee for a dollar. People hang out. They're really missing us. I read, I read a lot of articles about how the health of our seniors has been declining mentally and physically because they're missing that social interaction. And I have to tell you, in the last year, I, I really have, it's driven home how important what we do is for our seniors. Keep them engaged, with friends, with physical activity. We've lost a lot of people in this last year and they were our regulars and I think they're just lonely. I don't know if you've read Jerry Gervais' article in this last pine cone about Gloria Valentino, and it really talked about, he really wrote about the absence of company and socialization that's causing the deterioration of so many of our seniors. So, our mission statement is a lot about a place for people to gather camaraderie, all of that kind of thing. And daily, you know, 20 calls every day, when are you going to open? When are you going to open? I just, as of today, my staff is fully immunized. So, that was one of the policies that I recently put into plate, place was a mandatory vaccination policy. Unfortunately, we are losing one or two really good members of the team because they don't agree with that policy or don't want to take the vaccine. Understandable, everybody has their own opinions about everything, but for me, I've had to make a lot of hard decisions about how we keep our seniors safe and because they are the most at risk, I have to do everything I can do to keep them safe health, health-wise. When we open those doors, I want to know that my staff is healthy as well. So, when we're interacting, I don't have any staff that contract the virus and then have it kind of, you know, go down the line. As a, as a business, it's my responsibility to protect the health of my staff as well. So, it's, it's on many levels. Again, some people, as I told my staff, I said, sometimes I don't make the best decisions, but on this one, I am firm that this is the right decision. So, people will agree with it or not, but at least I'm setting up my members to feel comfortable coming back on campus. So, when we closed, I closed the business or closed the campus on March 11th, which was before the actual shutdown, shelter in place order. And I did that because we serve seniors. And I was kind of before everybody else, I had a call from Meals on Wheels and the Sally Griffin Center asking why I had made that decision. But obviously, by the time Monday came around afterwards, it was the right decision and everybody had to comply as well. So, right now, our classes are closed. We just restarted serving muffins and coffee, but it's to go. They can't come in the admin building. I brought the librarian back to get ready for the library to be open at some point. It'll probably be one or two at a time. Since Diamond Hall closed and we are no longer serving lunch, we did start a curbside to go program and it's off the charts. It's gone so well, about 100 meals, three days a week. People love it. Some of the people that didn't come on campus because they didn't want to socialize are so happy and they don't want it to go away. So, we figure when we open again, we're going to keep those three days of curbside service and then add to in-person. Before we closed, we had three in-person, but again, the curbside to-go meal just is so popular that we, we don't plan on having that going away anytime soon. So, even though we've been closed, I've had everybody on staff still, except for two that we furloughed, one of them we've already brought back. We did lose the development assistant, but you know, we, we made a bare bones budget. We had all the directors assume at least one other positions duties. So, we've worked really hard. We're working remotely as much as possible, but the plan is, May 1st, we start doing small groups that can move into bigger rooms, have air ventilation. So, Diamond Hall, which is the biggest room, is going to really take the bulk of everything. If we can do that, we, probably the Tai Chi, Qi Gong, things that you don't have to puff over as opposed to aerobics, those things can start, some of the smaller, the wood carvers can come back because they're all spaced six feet apart. We have a darkroom downstairs, one at a time can go there. So, it's just, for me, it was originally the stages, you know, the colored stages and what we would add for each stage. So, we had an action plan for that. And now we've got June 15th coming around the corner and, and you know, the state saying as gates are going to open and everything's back to normal and that's not how it's going to be here. We can't do that. We have to really still, masks are going to be required even though people will say, I got vaccinated. All four people in my bridge group have been vaccinated. So, we want to sit, you know, two feet away from each other and play cards. Well, not yet. So, you know, our job right now is to how we can serve our seniors, how we can bring them back in the fold and still protect their health and safety. Anybody have any questions for me? I mean, that's just kind of in a nutshell. We do have, right now, we have 2,400 members, a lot of people were waiting to join until we open again, but the people that have joined or renewed have given, their donations have been larger. So, our, our membership fee is actually a donation. So, even though the, the membership is lower, the donations are higher. My development director, Kimberly Williston, has been looking under every stone, taking every webinar, and she is over budget by quite a bit in terms of grants that we've received. So, we're, we're financially, we're okay. We're going to keep going. We've been around for 71 years and darn it, we'll be around for 71 more. And you know, we have our little rainy day fund. So, you know, bottom line is that the senior housing at, at the minimum will keep going on. I talked to Chip and Chip was saying that the foundation provides almost all of the required low income housing for the city of Carmel by the sea. He didn't say all, he said almost all. So, we, we provide a very important service to the city as well. Oh, we had two of the vaccination clinics here, 371 members each time, and I have to shout out to the city of Carmel, Paul Tomasi, the CERT team, everybody in the public works department, just great team effort to make that happen.
Thank you so much Holly. Yeah, you guys do such a great job for our community. I'm a member. I can't wait till you open and classes start again, but thank you so much for all that you do. Anybody?
We miss the people too. It's interesting that the vaccination clinic, when we had all those people going through and like, this is a great day. You know, you realize why you do what you do and it's the people. So, we're missing the people.
Yeah. No, I, Judy, I couldn't, couldn't agree more. I mean, Holly, we've talked a lot in this group about ways to ensure that the community understands what's going on and the available resources and the, and the organizations that are in this town. And just listening to what you're all doing, what you've done, it's incredible. And I, you know, to be honest, I didn't, I didn't know all that and I'm sure that, you know, a lot of the folks that I speak to don't. And so, you know, the more we can do to, to create a platform that allows you to spread that message and to get the word out there on what you're doing. It's, it's incredible and it makes me really proud of, of, of our town to have, you know, a resource and a foundation like you're supporting so many people. So, thank you. It means a lot and you're clearly, it's so impressive what you do and, and all you're doing and you're clearly passionate about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, if anything, what I've learned this last year is, is what the community means and how we're really all supporting each other, just touches my heart and, and makes me know that when I go out on the street and I'm walking around over to the post office, everybody's our friends. We're all friends, we're all supporting each other and that's pretty special.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a member.
I know Donna.
I didn't get a newsletter once and or twice and I go, where's my newsletter? And I had forgot to pay my dues.
Oh.
So, it was my fault. And then I get the print and I get it online and I posted optimistically, hoping that I can, you know, do the Wednesday, you know, some of the programs which I have. And thank you for sharing your programs also with other organizations. And thank you for keeping everybody safe because I'm 1,000% on your side for the vulnerable because I'm part of the vulnerable.
Yeah.
And I think we should all encourage everyone who's eligible to join the foundation.
Thank you. We have a lot of fun here when we're open.
Holly, this is Ellen Martin and thank you so much for your presentation. I mean, Carmel Foundation, if you're a senior in Carmel, you know, that's one of the most important programs that we have and all that you do. I was just there recently to get my taxes done because you allowed Alliance on Aging to use your facility. And I became a member last year and I just didn't realize you had to renew at the beginning of the year and it's on my to-do list, but thank you for all that you do. It's just amazing and I look forward to when you open. Thank you for your work.
Thank you Ellen. I wanted to point out one thing is that our 2,400 members come from all over. We even have out of state members that come into town for a month or two during the summer and they use their memberships then, members that are back on the East Coast now just to support us. So, very important. We also did our homebound meal delivery. We actually increased our meals and started delivering in Marina and Seaside. So, that's another thing that we've done over the last year. So.
Awesome, awesome work. Thank you.
Thank you Judy.
So, approval of the minutes from the last meeting and the workshop, the special meeting?
Well, I'm up to approve.
Some changes I'd like to make to the March 23rd special meeting. The other two meetings, I, you know, I'm fine.
What would you like to change Donna?
That's on the March the 23rd meeting. The, the information, let me bring it, I have my iPad so I can bring it up easier. The March 23rd meeting, the, okay. The item, oh, I, I wanted to know if the ad hoc, one of the things, the ad hoc list that John submitted, is that attached to the minutes? Because that gives different details and regarding particularly 4th of July, it's not just the flatbed truck driving around town with certain parameters. There was just some of this that I, I thought didn't really identify what we had said. And the other item was the Forest Theater. It leaves off the word on, now I'm looking for it. The equipment is not, it says that the equipment is owned by the Forest Theater. It's not owned by the Forest Theater. It's owned by the Forest Theater Foundation. The Forest Theater has no equipment, no equipment except the light bulbs there. And that's a, you know, so people would think that that came with the theater and it doesn't. It belongs to the Forest Theater. We've raised funds, they have over the last 15, 20 years to buy it. The city doesn't supply it. And so, and is available for rent and it's only for use by the two groups, the guild and PAC rep. So, I just didn't want anyone to, that there's equipment there because there isn't. So, that was the two, two changes that I wanted to make on the Forest Theater information. So, it's when, if somebody reads that, which besides us, to add that, to add that. And I like, you know, what, what is said about what our plan was, isn't quite what we had written down. So, I don't know if you attach those, those ad hoc recommendations or not.
So, for the Forest Theater item, we'll add the word foundation and to clarify that it's the Forest Theater Foundation because we had talked about that and that's important. With the other item, what Leslie did with her minutes is to track our conversation and discussion about that. So, it may not have been, our, our minutes are action minutes, so they're not a verbatim transcript of what occurred at each and every, the action that we took. And so, to attach that list would mean we would be setting some sort of precedence for attaching all of the staff reports that I write and all the same, every single document to the minutes for clarification. So, the most important things in the minutes, in our action minutes are the action that all of you take. So, when one of you makes a motion, that's the most important thing that's happening in the minutes and the way that we take the minutes. So, does that make sense Donna?
Yeah. No, no, I know, I know what you're saying. It's not what we proposed, it's what we sort of discussed.
Exactly. So, you'll see that section of that as we decide a thing to move forward with, that will be encapsulated there, but it might not reflect every single line of the list that you presented to me or how we discussed it.
Right. Okay. That's it. That's my, my suggestions.
Well, I, I made the motion to approve, so should I amend the word, the additional word of foundation? And then that motion, I will repeat, I approved the minutes with Dana's suggestion that we had foundation to who owns the equipment.
I second it. Linda Calafiore.
Yes.
Donna Jett.
Yes.
Ellen Martin.
Yes.
John Meidick.
Yes.
Judy referes us.
Yes.
Pat, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Receive an update on the farmer's market and discuss.
Okay, so for the farmer's market, um, we, I'm working with Raul Niall on using biodegradable bags. So, you'll see us starting to transition out plastic bags. It was something that we were starting to talk about as the market began and then we closed down and now we're open up again. So, some things that we're picking up, so that's something that you'll see, we'll be budgeting some funds in the community activities budget for that to help support our market manager with those efforts. It was something that I noticed as a shopper, it was like, oh, remember when we had had those conversations? And it was also noticed by our environmental compliance manager who had concerns about it. It also goes hand in hand with goal. I think we should incorporate in our strategic plan, which is something to support, you know, our climate change action plan, but something with sustainability and in how we conduct our special events and what is happening at the farmer's market and those things that we oversee. So, and that was Commissioner Calafiore's suggestion for the strategic plan goal addition. We did lose one of our vendors, our orchid seller who's been with us for a long time. So, you may see him missing from the market. There was some issues on his side of things with, he's, I mean, health-wise, everything's good. It's, it's just, he's unable to come to our market at this point in time. So, right now, I think we're down to two flower vendors. We're also working with one of our cheese vendors on their setup and packaging. And the issue of dogs at the market continues. Last week seemed to be a plethora of very tiny, very barky dogs and I heard complaints from several people. There was a, a gang of them that decided to scrap just outside of the corner of the market and bark at each other and probably sound louder and nastier than they were. But, but at any rate, I'm going to be working with the market manager on doing some reminder, reminders to our community that dogs are not allowed at the farmer's market per the Department of Health. We know this is a dog town and we want it to be dog friendly, but as you walk through our market, which isn't that, that huge, no dogs are allowed. So, we'll, last time, when I was working with the health department, when the city was running the market, we did outreach via signage at the market. We put up some notices at the post office and I also did a press release to the pine cone that was picked up and an article was written. So, I'd like to do some outreach that way again. Of course, it's, you know, going to always be a challenge with people who are visiting here in our town and happen to have their dog with them. Raul and I have talked about, you know, what is the best way for us to kind of police that type of thing at the market? Because, you know, some days it seems like his entire day would be taken up with dog management and not farmer's market management. So, we'll continue to work on that, but just so you know that I am aware of, of this being an issue and we'll see what we can do. Linda.
Um, well, Dan and I were handing out Easter eggs and, you know, it was really noticeable about, it, it just got to be almost funny how many dogs are walking back and forth. But our observation, Dan, I hope you agree with me, was it was mostly tourists. So, so therefore, you know, putting letters, you know, letting the community know. And then once, I think, one some, you know, it's, we see one dog and then everyone else says, oh, this must be okay. So, do we, and I guess my question is, do we currently have signs on all three entrances?
I think we need, I think we need bigger and different signs than what we have. The ones that we have don't really compete with the, the nice big colorful farmer's market signs that we have. And I agree that probably it is a tourist thing because I know some of you have dogs and you don't bring them to the market when you shop. So, we'll continue to work on better signage at all three entrances to the market and, and try to let people know because it is becoming a thing from what I hear. So, I have a, you know, an, some anecdata, as I call it, which is not real data, but a friend of a friend was here in Carmel for the weekend and it was a long weekend and they were excited because they were here for Farmer's Market Day. They had been in the past and it was enough of a thing that that was a draw for them and an excitement, a level of excitement that they could go to our little farmer's market. So, we're doing a really good job there, but yes, tourist outreach, maybe there's some work that I can do with the Hospitality Improvement District, HID, and work with Amy Herzog to see if part of their messaging or their advertising, the farmer's market on their website, that they are including information there, but please no dogs, please don't bring your dog, which is a challenge because they're not allowed to leave them in their hotel room. So.
The other markets, all of the other markets do not allow dogs. There, it's not even up for grabs and they do have huge signs, but some of them, the one that I've been to recently literally has a monitor of volunteer and one- And one of the things they, they tell the, uh, people coming in, you must have your mask on. That was another issue. And, you know, and even though there's a big sign, they remind them, we're so sorry, the health department does not allow dogs. You know, and I, and you're right, Raoul doesn't have the time. But Linda and I sitting there April first, didn't feel it was our responsibility, our job. Uh, but, talking of a dog, uh, but, uh, if, you know, if you wanted to have the volunteers strongly suggest. Like that, the health department, you just have to keep blaming them. And, and you would be surprised, tourists know in many of their hometowns, the dogs aren't allowed. So it, 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 you know, it's not that they always don't know. But one of them, they're usually a couple, one of them can sit on the corner with the dog while the other one shops. So I think they, they can figure it out if they've traveled that far.
Yeah, we'll continue to work on it. So hopefully you'll see the dog situation at the market ease, but it will probably take a couple of weeks.
Um, one of the things that, that makes it hard in our farmer's market is we have that sidewalk that's, that goes behind the market. And so the question is, are dogs allowed on that sidewalk and also, um, in front of the sidewalk by the library? As opposed to just the street? And, I mean, someone needs to give that a good look and, and decide, does that have to be barricaded too? I, I don't know the answer. I'm just saying it's an issue. And also I think dog, dog free zone signs, which could be small. I mean, yes, we need big signs at the entrance. But if we could have dog free zone, smaller signs either at every table, every, um, every possible place. It wouldn't require a whole big expense to stick them up.
No, it wouldn't. No, we can do something like that. I'll find out about the sidewalks. I think that because those are public right of way and not considered part of the event venue, those still need to be open for people to access. Um, for the public. So I'll look into that Linda and double check.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the dogs being on the sidewalk. It's just the question is how do you.
Right, exactly. I, yeah.
I mean, is there, I mean, I was thinking out loud, you know, can we control entrance any better? I mean, we have essentially three entry points, call it four, if you use the corner on the inside by the park. But is there a way just to funnel to create, you know, barriers, to put up barricades to kind of officially enter into the market? And, and where you funnel everybody through, there's the big sign. I mean, right now it kind of is, you know, you walk in from wherever. But if we created, just, I'm just trying to think of a way to kind of nip this in the butt. And let's just put up some barricades with the police department and have signs on those barricades that say, you know, you have to wear a mask and no dogs. And at least then it's pretty clear that everybody that's entered has walked through an area and, and either is directly disobeying the sign or whatnot, you know? I don't know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, um, I'll look into that and the sidewalk thing and talk to the P D about it. With anytime you're dealing with barricades, it's always, is there going to be enough eager for emergency vehicles if for some reason they need to get in? So that's, that's always a thing with anything that's happening on the street, not just farmer's market. So I'll discuss that with them, but I also will need to work with Raoul on, once we set up these, these entrance points, who's monitoring them? Cause we still have two additional potential entrance points coming from the Devendorf Park. One on the corner, behind the sidewalk. And then also there's this one here in the middle, right directly in front of my office, coming from the Park Branch parking lot. So there's, there's lots of little hidey holes and things to come in, but we can definitely try to funnel people better, better. Improve the signage, um, work with Visit Carmel to get the word out to people who are visiting our community that, you know, it's one day a week for a few hours. Dogs aren't allowed per the Monterey County Health Department.
Do you have anything? I, I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, um, uh, I don't think that you can, um, keep people with dogs up the sidewalks. In the city of Monterey, you know, on the Tuesday night market, you, you can be on the sidewalk, but not in the, uh, market itself. And if you have volunteers, it would be good to train them because people can get aggressive, that they're going in no matter what. And, um, you know, I've been to our market and have seen people look at the sign and then just keep walking, you know? Because they see someone else. Um, I can't remember if these signs have a dog with a, you know, cross, uh, you know, but that's international. You don't need to speak English for that. But, um, just training whoever you have there is really important. So they're not put in a really difficult situation.
Yeah. And that's one of the things that Raoul and I have talked about. And the, the dog, the issue of dogs at the market has been slowly getting worse since we reopened the market. But it was something we had talked about. And that was, you know, like, it wasn't bad initially. And so it wasn't something I chose to have Raoul focus on again, because he would be spending most of his time talking to dog people. But because they can get very aggressive about dogs. And I know that there are service animals as well. This is something that we deal with at the library with people coming into the, um, library with, with, um, service animals, which include small horses. And there are certain questions that we are allowed to ask legally, uh, about somebody bringing in, in animal into the library. And there are other questions that we can't ask them. So, you know, it's figuring those things out and, um, making sure that our market manager can do the work that he needs to do. And he has the support he has. So I think there are some good measures and thank you all for your feedback on this. And we'll continue to work on, um, the farmer's market. And that, I don't have any other announcements around that.
Okay, then we should open it up to the public for public comment. Joe? I see you raise your hand.
Yes. Um, thank you very much. Uh, congratulations on the ad hoc committee. That was wonderful to hear that that had happened. And, um, uh, and again, and also thanks about the, the bio bags. That's really great. I'm sorry, I didn't say Joe Todd Carmel. And there, the flower vendors are, there are two other vendors that also sell flowers. The plant person and there's another one who has, uh, produce and she has flowers in baskets. So there are actually four. Um, really sorry about the orchid guy. It's just unfortunate, but anyway, they're working on getting a new one. And, uh, I was wondering about the signs as well, that there aren't any, there, the last, uh, market person had larger signs at each entrance announcing that this was the farmer's market and they haven't done that. They do have the chalkboard, but it's a, a smaller sign. It's, uh, so I, if they, um, I mean, I mentioned this to Raoul too. And he said he's working on having a larger sign and a sign at each entrance saying farmer's market as well. And the other thing I noticed that the physical distance is not being adhered to. And I was wondering if there could be something like the library has in their, uh, parking lot where you go and pick up your books. There is a, a sign that says, uh, you know, six feet, something regarding the physical distance. Cause I know that a lot of the lines are not, uh, acknowledging that. And, um, I mean, because the, I was going back to the signs, there is the, the signs are there that talk about dogs. But they don't have a sign saying this is a farmer's market. There's nice tall signs that say no dogs. But, uh, it would be great if there were also larger signs. And the other thing that I wanted to suggest is there could be, uh, from the, uh, police department. Uh, as, uh, for the vendors to have a, um, sign in their cars so they don't get ticketed. And he said he was working on that, but that it hasn't been, um, completed yet. And I think, um, I think that's it. Dogs, flowers. Yeah, but okay. And, and thanks for doing the bio bags too. I noticed that had been returned. Okay, thank you very much. I think that's it.
Comments. Anyone else wishing to, from the public wishing to speak on this? All right. Well, thank you for the update, Ashley. And moving on to the strategic plan.
All right. So thank you all for your comments, if you sent me things. Or if you worked on the Google document link that I shared with you. Oh, and, um, before we move on Judy, I just did want to make note that was included in your packet. The, um, I included the calendar for the signups that we have to date. Carmel Residents Association, you're a nice and in green for the fourth Thursday of every month. Um, but those, as we get those in community groups, we'll, we'll keep adding those and we'll put that on our calendar on the city's homepage.
Yeah, I noticed that we've had some openings there still.
We do.
If somebody could volunteer, that'd be great.
Yes. Um, so let me do a screen share.
Oh, good. Then I don't have to go through my phone.
Okay, how's that everybody? Is it big enough?
Awesome.
Okay. So when we last looked, I had a whole, um, section of items in blue for us to incorporate into the strategic plan. So it still continues to be a work in progress. I noticed, um, Judy, that you put a comment in here, um, needs a rewrite work. I will work on it. Um, the mission statement is actually codified, so it's in the city's municipal code. So in order for us to, to do anything with that, we'd need to change the code itself. And I think that the mission statement overall, I mean, we've seen, um, the impacts of the pandemic with the focus on, um, our streets and parks, which we have been focused on previously. But we've, I think, um, pivoted successfully, um, to keep a lot of these other things that are in the mission statement going. If you feel strongly about rewording it or reworking it or have some other thoughts that go along with it. I would encourage us to contemplate adding at a vision statement. Um, vision statements are, you know, uh, different, mission statements are our core of what we do. Vision statements are shorter term and looking towards where we're headed. So we might contemplate working a vision statement in, um, if the board, so, or commission chooses to do. So I put a little placeholder in here that goes along with your comment there Judy, to add in, potentially add in a vision statement.
My, my thoughts here, Ashley, were that because of the pandemic, it's not just needing, um, in person. That we've, we've done stuff virtually. And so I didn't want to exclude virtual. And as, uh, as the foundation said, they're going to continue to do things, you know? And I think we'll continue to do things virtually too, not just, and that was, that was my only.
I wonder if, um, potentially, let me, let me talk to the city clerk. She's doing some amendments to the city board and commission pages right now. And the ordinance is related to when we do appointments. And I'm wondering if we can ask her to include, um, some language, um, that says gatherings which bring the community together safely, virtually or on the city streets and the parks. And update it that way since she's doing, let me ask her if that's a possibility.
Okay. Cause that, that was my only thing. It was like, but you know, we're not always there. So, yeah.
Okay, I will, I will ask her if that is okay and appropriate to do with her code updates.
And can I say something really quick about that? And, and it's a question, it was from the city council meeting. They were saying appointments were two years, but they're not.
They're four year appointments.
But they said two.
Yeah. And the library board of trustees is the only anomaly with that. Those appointments are for, are three year appointments.
Okay. So they were wrong.
Yes.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, I will, I will, um, follow up on that item. So we can take this section on vision statement out and I will follow up on that. Um, so I think for goal one, I think we need to continue to work on, um, communication opportunities. Um, as we just saw with our last item, with the farmer's market item, communication is paramount with what we do in terms of community activities stuff. Um, so I want to continue to, um, work on our in-house communications plan for our department. And that's something that, you know, Leslie and I are slowly working into our routine as we do. You know, not only when we were doing the big special events, but now as we're doing, um, smaller things and participating in the market. Um, how and when are we blasting things out to the public and what mediums are we using to do that? So I want to keep that in there. Um, in addition with communication opportunities, I want to work on developing a policy for community, community group participation in the farmer's market. Um, we don't have a policy right now. We're just kind of testing out the waters for, and right now it's just all of our, in my mind, it's all of our local nonprofits. Who are looking to get the word out about what they do, or if they're looking for volunteers, um, or raising awareness about something. So I'd like to put something in writing about that, whether it's incorporated into the contract we have with our farmer's market manager who manages the market. Or if it's a separate policy that we have for the city. Um, it could be either or both, a combination of those things. So I, I included a bullet there for that. Um, and then I think we can better and more regularly use the city's website for our communications regarding our communities events, farmer's market. And then, um, I've spoken about, um, better use of pages for community groups and pointing people, um, who come to our website towards volunteer opportunities with our local groups to participate in our market now.
I have a question when you get to me.
Okay, uh, I can't, I've only got four people here. So go ahead. Is that Donna?
Yeah, um, I wanted to say that I reached out to Ashley to put in the Carmel Women's Club newsletter a blurb about the farmer's market and about the library. And I think any of the nonprofits who have any communication, uh, vehicle, be it even the, the foundation, Carmel Foundation would, uh, work in, uh, making sure that all of their members are aware that they know that the farmer's market and the library is there for everyone. And also the, uh, Friday newsletter, I read it and watch it. And again, they have highlighted, uh, some of the things that's going around and going on in the city that's not necessarily on the webpage. And they're to be commended for it. And also us giving away things at the market, uh, makes an impact on visit as well as, they're surprising how children are adults. So I think you're doing it, but I think, as I said, any of the nonprofits need to have blurbs about the, we're not advertising and paying them. But they need to make that part of their community outreach to keep the public informed.
I think it goes, yeah, I think it goes both ways. And I'd like to, I, I think we're doing a good job of getting that two-way communication open. And I see that as part of our, um, that communications plan that I talk about with, um, you know, like for instance, when I sent out the request for proposals information and the survey information for the Forest Theater. I was sure to, to, once that survey had gone live, I sent it out to the Carmel Residents Association, the Chamber of Commerce. PAC Rep Theater, the Sunset Center, Forest Theater Guild, the groups that I knew would have some interest. And just politely ask them, if you are sending a newsletter out and you think this would be appropriate, would you please share with your group? Because I do understand too, some of our groups are fundraising groups. And they have a certain message that they want to get across. And everybody's newsletter isn't the everything newsletter. So I think there's a balance to be struck. And if somebody doesn't put something in about our market or something we ask, it's not the end of the world. And we'll maybe not get all of everybody's everything in. But I think it would be good standard practice to bring awareness, to make sure that we're, um, contact. We have a good list of contacts within our community to send these things to and that we are doing it on a regular basis. So I don't think the expectation, again, it should be that everybody shares everything we ever send them. But that we at least make the effort to provide them with a certain level of awareness and hopefully they'll do the same with us.
Um, I don't know who can see my hands. It's Linda.
I can, Linda. I see you.
Okay. Um, now in terms of, uh, communication, again, just to add, um, I did, uh, join the library foundation fundraiser last week. And they did a fantastic, the library, Ashley and Alex did an amazing video before the formal program about the library. Um, they gave us a tour. They, there was some chat. I mean, I, the one thing I learned was that after we return a book, they hold it for 10 days to quarantine. I mean, I was, maybe I should have known that, but I had no idea. Um, I don't, I don't know how long that will go on. Um, anyway, so. Anyway, so seeing the video, and it was really well-produced. And so I don't know what kind of expense or effort that was. But you know, as we start thinking about, you know, more advanced ways to communicate, you know, a video about the farmer's market, I think could be really appropriate. That would go out in the farmers, that would go out on the Friday letter, and that would be available somewhere. Because that library video that you did, I'm guessing you're going to get more mileage out of it. Is that what you've thought about?
I would, I would think so. That was something that the foundation organized. I'm not sure what the cost of it was. I just, I was provided with my, a basic outline of the steps and some inkling of what I needed to talk about. But thank you for your comments on it. And I do think something like that for the farmer's market would, would be great to let people know what, what we're doing there and what that. So I'll add that to the farmer's market list for them to talk about and also think about opportunities in the future. Once we're doing our big special events, if we did some sort of really cool super role of, you know, we have, we have a camera. I know it's our community activities camera, but we're so often in the moment actually working the events. We don't get that many pictures of what's actually occurring. So it might be a good priority for us to add that in for communication opportunities for what we do as a commission in terms of our special events and the farmer's market, to start documenting those things and to put something together like the library did in that instance. Does that sound, I'll add in a, a line, a bullet on that to start working with our market managers.
Well, I just think in our, in our goals and maximizing communication opportunities that we somehow add, you know, the use of video. Because I don't think we really talk about it. We talk about social media, but we don't talk about putting videos on the social media.
No, the, our farmer's market manager has been using social media to advertise the farmer's market. If you are on there, I know I follow them on Instagram and see their posts. And I've been following a number of our vendors who've been advertising the market, and they've been doing a great job. We can add something in, yes, about film and video specifically regarding our event.
Well, I mean, si- since we've lost Nancy, who, who would always remind us to check social media. I mean, I, I need to pay more attention to the farmer's market, social media, because I've been remiss. I didn't know what was happening.
Yeah, you can follow the, I've been keeping tabs on the Nitro guy, so I know when he's near my neighborhood. And I can get my, my guava lemonade fix on the weekend. But he, he and several other of our vendors that I've gotten used to. And usually if you go up there and buy something, they'll let you know, and then they, you can see where else they are on the peninsula as well. Because most of our vendors work other markets as well. But they're great about championing our market and letting people on the peninsula know when they're going to be in Carmel by the sea. So, okay, video and film, I will add this in. Thank you, Linda. For, and I tried to divide these up. I mean, we can just have a plan for 21 through 2024. I tried to divide these up by year. So for second year objectives, the banner polls for community activities, events and farmer's market, I put is the next year goal. I anticipate for this rest of this year, it's going to be important for us to keep the banner polls used or shared with the city. We are the city, but for communication about expectations for residents and visitors about COVID and social distancing and masking, that's what's up right now. There'll be some banner poll sharing, I think, for the next thing that's scheduled as a PAC Rep production, if that's able to go forward. So they're on the calendar for that. If we are able to do special events this year, we can look into that. I am also operating with a reduced budget, and banners are not inexpensive, neither is the hanging of them. So that is a consideration, something I'd like to more fully flesh out starting with 2022. So at the beginning of next year, we'll go dive, dive deeper into that as a discussion and plan for budgeting and budget requests for that fiscal year 2022, 23, and be ready to hit go on having banners installed or are hopefully somewhat return to something resembling normalcy, whatever that is. And then I did keep on here, I think it's important. I don't know where the city is on this, which is developing a social media policy and a plan for an overall city, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, you know, next door for communication. Again, that's going to be administration-driven. I'm hoping that we will be able to work with administration on doing e-blasts, something similar to the Friday letter. We already add to the Friday letter, but something that goes out to everybody who's been participating in our community activities meetings and is interested in hearing anything about anything else we're doing, if we're at the market or some sort of monthly e-blast of here's who's at the market this week. And also this month, it's the Memorial Day celebration, we'll see you there type of thing. So that's, we're moving in that direction. It's just very slow. And, but I want to keep that on there. And then, of course, our ongoing encouraging the community to sign up for the Friday letter. And then hopefully our community activities e-blast that will be happening at some point this year. So goal two, any, anything else with goal one in communications? Anything? Anybody? Nope, okay. Onto goal two, embracing opportunities, diversity of events, social gatherings to encourage community interactions. We added some language to the first bullet, develop pilot programs for community events. The thing that came up for us this last year is decorating for holidays.
Can you scroll up a little bit, Ashley?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm looking at two different things. I've got the paper copy and the. You're welcome. Thank you, Judy. Sorry about that. So developing pilot programs for community events, decorating for the holidays post-pandemic. I think I, what we meant by this was that in addition to what we are doing in terms of, hey, it's the Sandcastle Contest, or it's the city's birthday, we would also be incorporating in our Pumpkins on Parade campaign where we're encouraging, you know, some sort of theme for the city for that year that we're celebrating throughout the month of October, leading up to the city's birthday type of thing, so that things look festive in town. Same with the winter holidays. And I can reword this so that's clearer. Are there any comments about that? Did I, am I misinterpreting what we meant about it? Nope, okay, then I will clarify that, and we will continue to incorporate that in. The next bullet, hold a citizens academy potentially fall 2021 and spring 2022. That's something that we really did want to try to do in person. We can look at a virtual model for it, but that was some research that Leslie did. And we haven't figured out a, a different name for it, so that does need to come back to the commission for further discussion. But looking at probably fall 2021 or spring 2022. Another factor in what we do in terms of timing for this, again, is staff. Remember, our community activities is still down one full-time staff member, so that's a big impact on what.
Fall, fall 2021 is probably too aggressive.
I think it is too aggressive, but I like to be optimistic sometimes. We'll look at spring of 2022 and see where we are then. Because we still do have events to think about and communications and all the other things. So I added a bullet in. So I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna take fall 2021 out of that, and we'll shoot for spring 2022. It will probably be coming before the commission prior to that for discussion before we launch it. So just so you're aware, it's not just going to happen out of the blue. We still do need more discussion on it. I added in the next bullet, I think that it is important for us to keep an eye on this, especially when we talk about small programs and things. To make note of this, because I think it's a great idea, a community group fair in Devendorf Park while the farmer's market is happening. It's something that was brought up by Carmel Neighbors, this is a suggestion Wanda Volmer, who attended our meetings, a couple of our community activities meetings. We have the community groups regularly appearing at our farmer's market. And I think it would be a great thing to do for our community. And I did make note here, either during the farmer's market or on the weekends as well. That's something that could be simple and easy to organize. It's just folding tables and chairs and inviting our community groups and doing a nice setup in the park. And then letting people know that, that, that those groups are going to be there and that they are available to talk or hand out bags. And that's a good way, if you're looking to get to know the place that you live in, or you're looking for a volunteer opportunity or something like that, that's, that's a place that you can do that. So I did add that in. Go ahead.
So starting at our farmer's market, like we're already making available. I would think if we, once we get those filled up, because, you know, it's, it's not filled up, right? I mean, we have.
It's not filled up, and it's not filled up because we're still kind of getting the word out to everybody that this is a possibility. And it's also to coordinating, I think a number of groups are still dealing with the effects of the pandemic in terms of staffing levels, what they're able to focus their attention on. And coming to, like, actually now coming to a physical place and going to things when everything's so virtual and easy, I think is an added layer. I know I would love to have the library out there, but that means that I, I would need to be out at a table with probably board members. So it's, it's just coordinating. And I, I think we're, we're just getting off to a slow start, we're coming out of the pandemic. Yeah, filling up that calendar. And then, and I didn't put a date on that, just sometime in this first year. I think that would be good, and probably once we get into the spring, we'll have our calendar more filled up, we'll have our policy worked out. And then we can look at having a big community fair type of thing, either at the market or shoot for a Saturday or Sunday or both.
I think that's a great, I, I, I love this idea. I think it's fantastic. I think it, to, you know, like I saw the Carmel, the Carmel Youth Center was out there the other day. And I, I saw a couple of families walk up and hadn't known about it, and there's some summer camp opportunities, and there were kids with them, and they were super excited about getting involved. I think this is so important. Is, is there a way, if we're, if we're going to do this, I just want to make sure it's a success. Can we advertise, or how do we make sure that all the, the community groups know that this is occurring, so that they can show up? Can we put something, you know, a week ahead in a pine cone, or just make sure that we're, we're not missing anybody and that this is made aware to all these groups?
Yeah, if we're, if we need to do some, some better outreach to our community groups to let them know, one, they can participate in the farmer's market, that we've got a calendar, where, you know, one to two groups per market is working really well. And that will add you to the market. We just had, we, so far, we've had the Carmel Residents Association, Carmel Youth Center, American Legion Post 512 has come. And I think that's it so far. And then you guys, of course. So we need to do some better outreach for our community groups. And then, of course, before we did anything large, like a community group type of fair in Devendorf Park while the market's going on or something on the weekends, we would do not only outreach to the groups that we would schedule to participate, but also to the community to let them know that this was happening. So we're still in that early, early stages. Any, any other thoughts or comments about that one?
I think it's a great idea, and as soon as the info's out and things are opening up a little bit more, there'll be more nonprofits. One of the things that I would, you know, ask to be considered is that anybody who's advertising for that, they put no dogs allowed.
There we go. Hey, come see us at the market, but don't bring your dog.
Or come to our, our, our booth, you know, and make some art. First night's doing art. Don't bring your dog.
Poor dog. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ellen. The next bullet is, of course, responsive to a couple of their requests that we've gotten during the pandemic, which have to do with our public art policy. So starting to make amendments to the public art policy and program so that we can be more responsive in requests for public art and better work with the planning commission so that responsibilities for approvals and, and all of that are better delineated so we can keep things moving along and make sure that the community is happy with any sort of program that we establish. So we can start working on that this year. I'm not quite sure how long that will take. I think it'll be some overlap into the second year objective with, with some of the other things we have to do. I did keep in the second year objectives, work with the Chamber of Commerce and visit Carmel on the Ambassador and Respectful Visitor type of program for Carmel by the Sea. That was something we've been talking about, kind of along the lines of the love Carmel like a local. And how are we, how, how do we think of our visitors, not in an adversarial light, but more inclusive as community members while they are here. And so that's why we have that goal there. And I think it's worth keeping around, and that's why I left it there. We didn't, we didn't tackle it yet, but Linda.
Yeah, I remember us talking about this at length in the past. And what, what's going on with other communities in that? Are we tapped into, I mean, because we don't have to really recreate the wheel here. But as other communities are struggling with, you know, over tourism, they, I'm sure they've come up with some ways to handle this too.
I think it's, yes, I think it's a matter of reaching out to the Hospitality Improvement District here in our town. I attend their meetings once a month to see just how they're marketing the village, and it is very responsibly. I will say that I'm very impressed by everything they've done through the pandemic. And now I think we can reach out to the various visitor centers on the peninsula. I would start there. I mean, I'm sure all of you have read with over tourism types of things, other measures that have been taken. The first thing that pops into my mind when you said that word over tourism, Linda, and I don't know that we're in that place at all, but is Venice.
Exactly.
And they had, you know, the people in the vests, walking around, keeping tourists from sitting on steps and blocking pathways and, and all of the things like that. I don't think we're quite there yet, and I don't think we need to dawn our yellow vests, but I do think that you're right. Yes, starting locally with our, our visitor centers and chambers of commerce respectively to find out how they're doing, what they do, and what can we do to support you with that and do outreach of our own. Does that seem logical, reasonable?
Thank you.
And then for third year objectives.
Pearl?
There, I don't have anything listed there under this goal. For ongoing for this, for this particular goal, continuing to build our partnerships with community groups, and then also refine our special event permitting process. I think that's really important, and that goes along with that public art policy program too. Are the things that we've got in place approachable and doable for regular humans who, who ostensibly just want to make a nice impact on our community and do a nice thing? So while still preserving village character, of course, making sure we're balanced down. If anybody thinks of anything for 2023, and we may find as we embark on our first year objective, of course, that things shift as they do depending on capacity and, you know, what comes up in real life that we need to focus our attention on. I did add in here, and I was struggling with wording here, but sustainability goal. So Linda, do you want to speak a little more to that, since you wrote me?
Sure. You know, when, when Dawn and I were asked to participate in the Easter program, and I read that we were going to be handing out plastic eggs. I, I mean, it just, I should have been thinking about this before, but it just kind of hit me very strongly that we needed to start thinking about our use of plastics in what we're doing around town. And then I know that there's an environmental committee, and I know we have a sustainability person. So surely the, the city is working on, on this in their own. And I think we just should be reflecting in what we're doing and what we're supporting with what the city is supporting. So I don't know what the city's doing about plastics, frankly.
I would, yeah, I will, with the commission's blessing, I'd like to take this goal free and talk to our environmental compliance manager about it, since she is the liaison to the Climate Change Committee. And she and I have had several conversations in the past about things that I know, I'm going to say this, and I don't want everybody to be shocked, but we've talked about the beaded necklaces of the Fourth of July, and we've talked about the glow necklaces at Christmas and other alternates to those types of things. So we have been, you may have noticed. So we have been, you may have noticed this last time we had a parade, maybe the last two times. Um, and we had a luncheon at Sunset Center. There used to be tchotchkes and things that were on the tables for the kids. We took those things away because they're, they are just little bits of plastic, um, which are fun bits of plastic, but end up in a landfill somewhere or in a storm drain somewhere. So I'd like to work with.
Yeah. And, and I just want to say that the eggs were fantastic. I mean, it was a great price point. They looked beautiful. They were wonderful little toys in there. I mean, for the price point, I was kind of shocked. I mean, little cars that, that people could use. But I think, you know, it's a chance for us to start making a statement. Basically it's trash and pollution. I mean, those are the two things.
Yeah, I, I agree. And, and, um, I think on our, when we get to the last item and we talk about, um, what we're doing for the next upcoming holidays at the market, there are other opportunities we can explore. I mean, for Mother's Day, we talked about just doing flowers. That supports our local vendor. And so I think there's other opportunities for us to look at partnering with maybe the Forest Beach Commission or Carmel Cares was doing their thing with the, I think the Carmel Foundation to grow saplings and adopted trees. So there may be other things along those lines that support village efforts um, that we can look into if we, if we do anything like that at any of our events or any of the farmer's market giveaways.
I, I must say, I went to the beach for the first time in months since I got the new puppy. I haven't been able to go. And the puppy's vaccinated now and she could go to the beach this weekend. And I picked up lots of plastic eggs on the beach halves, you know? The puppy was like, oh, what's this? This is fun. But yeah, no, I picked up a lot of them. So I don't know that they were ours, but you know, people hide. I tend to take my kids for Easter shell hunts instead of Easter egg hunts. But I guess some people bury the eggs in the sand. I don't know.
No, and I can say that it's something that the library, we phased out, um, two years ago for our summer reading program. We, we did a lot of those little prize giveaway types of things. And we actually partnered with um, a couple of our local retail shops so that when kids reached a certain mark, they got a gift certificate for a free ice cream cone or pizza or something at Thinker Toys. Instead of, um, you know, those little gooey hands you can smack at things, which are incredibly fun, but end up stuck somewhere on your mom's wall or something like that. So yes, I think I'll, I'll work to develop a goal to bring back to all of you with our environmental compliance manager and some objectives under there for, for things that we can do in the upcoming years to be on board with that. So thank you, Linda.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, goal four is a carryover from our last strategic plan to assess the natural environment, to develop long range planning for maintenance and enhancement to include pathways, parks, right of ways and walkways. I'd like to wordsmith this to include our community rooms. Um, since we are charged with the oversight of, um, the Vista Lobos Room and the Scout House, um, both of which are buildings that need work. Um, and then of course Devendorf Park. Um, uh, that's one of the things I had listed under the first year objectives. We talked about doing a park expansion project. Um, that's in front of the council for conceptual, just approval of the thought of an idea type of thing. Um, and moving forward and socializing that with the community. Um, no money, no design, no anything like that for the first year. Um, so if you're following the capital improvement discussions with this city council that's on there. Um, there's lots of, of course deferred maintenance because there were no capital projects done in this last year. Um, so there's a lot of things that were heavy on Devendorf Park in this plan. And I think that, um, and I did include the policy for governing the use of city facilities here in this section. Um, and I added a bullet regarding the Forest Theater contract since we've been charged with doing the community outreach for that. I think seeing that project through till it's end is important to, to have as part of this. I'm not sure right now, um, when we'll be able to open the Vista Lobos Community Room. For use, it's acting as a satellite office right now for the police department, should they need it. Um, and so I'll have to work on, on that piece for this upcoming year. And then the Scout House project. Um, for opening that, we started with a community outreach to help improve, um, design that would be going forward. And that of course was stymied by the, um, the complete reduction of the capital improvement plan budget last fiscal year. So, um, I think we'll start to see, um, some hopeful return to normalcy or, um, more discussion around improvements to Vista Lobos and the Scout House in years 2022 and 2023. I'll, I'll continue to track the, um, what the council is working on this fiscal year, but I think next fiscal year, we, as we work on, um, a policy governing the use of city facilities. And I think we should review, um, what we heard from people, um, and their expectations about the use of the Scout House. Um, should, um, be prepared at the beginning of the fiscal year to make, or not the beginning of the fiscal year, the beginning of the calendar year, next January, 2022, be prepared to make recommendations about the, um, use of Vista Lobos and the use of Scout House. And, and how they, um, should be upgraded accordingly to meet those, to meet those needs. Um, that is not something that's new to our commission. It used to be done regularly in the past when we oversaw Vista Lobos and Scout House. It's something that fell by the wayside as this commission became more focused on special events and special event permitting. So we're just kind of swinging the pendulum a little bit backwards in terms of what our focus is. So, um, I want to work on restructuring this section a little bit, just for clarity in terms of Vista Lobos and Scout House. And not having it be quite so heavy on Dev- Devendorf Park. Um, and I think that's it. What, does anybody have anything for this goal? I will work on cleaning this one up. For certain, Ellen.
I just, uh, clarification. Does the city have plans to be opening, um, Vista Lobos and, um, a Scout House, uh, in 2021?
So the Scout House, no. Um, the Scout House needs, um, some work for, um, to be in, uh, compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. It's, it's inaccessible at this point. It was red tagged. So it needs, it needs design work done and it needs actual construction work. It does have a new roof on it. That's good. Um, so it survived the rainy season. Vista Lobos needs work done. Uh, it would be nice to remodel that whole building, but, um, in the interim, it needs windows replaced. It's just like a lot of our other old buildings that we have here in town. Um, uh, windows replaced, dishwasher replaced, some upgrades in the kitchen, things that are leaking, continual amp problem, I think in the kitchen. So, um, those types of things. Um, in terms of reopening, our high priority is going to be opening our other city facilities first, City Hall. Um, and the Planning and Building Department. So people are able to come into City Hall and look at plans. And then of course the library building. So, um, not quite sure where the Vista Lobos falls in on that, but it gives us an opportunity to, um, maybe do some of those smaller improvements while it's closed. And, um, to work on that policy. And like I said, the police department do have it ready in case they need it. Um, as a satellite dispatch office in the event that, you know, now most of the city staff are vaccinated. But in the event that there were, um, members of our staff who became sick, that that was an extra place for staff could be, um, to keep communicating to the public. So I'm not how long, I'm not sure how long that's going to be needed, um, but I will keep tabs on that. And that's all I have for, um, for our strategic plan review for the time being. I did include just at the bottom of this, which was included in the packet, something that I'm thinking about as we go through this. And that's how we think about, um, community. What does that word mean to all of us? As we go through and we invite people to our meetings and we go to other meetings and we think about reopening after the pandemic. Um, who, who's, who's in our community? Where is our community? What is community? All of these existential thoughts. Um, so I'll do some more cleanup and hopefully I think we're nearing completion on this, you guys. And if there's any, oh, public comments, probably Judy.
Yeah, that's what I was going to get too. And I gave, I gave a little definition of community there. And also on the other ones, you know, if, if they shut down the Devendorf Park project, which they didn't sound like they were really thrilled with, but who knows? You know, there's that other one at the post office that you have drawings for too. So go that way.
We can. And I think that is, um, I would like to look at goal four or perhaps bifurcate goal four. So that we are aware of what we do. So for instance, um, and maybe it's just a goal on its own and not a full, um, uh, it doesn't need to have objectives, but what, what we do with the art policy, what we do with our facilities, everything what we do, how does that affect the natural environment? Um, are we doing anything to the detriment? It goes in, in hand in hand with the sustainability goal. So maybe there's some merging there and then a clear delineation with, okay, our physical spaces like Devendorf Park, where community events are happening and the same with Vista Lobos and Scout House. So I'll do some work on these.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a question.
Yes, stop.
Um, after the, um, Forest Theater, um, contract has let, uh, uh, we were involved in the farmer's, uh, market. I understand that we won't be involved in selecting the, uh, Forest Theater, uh, contract winner. Um, but will we have any oversight after that contract is let? Or it will just be the city oversight since, which is okay. I'm just wanting to be clear. If we have any oversight, uh, a report once a year even, or a visit, or any, if we see any of the accounting, or that will be all the city, which is either way is okay. I just wanted to be clear which, which way it will work.
So it will be the city, um, overseeing that contract. But I think that it will be very similar to having Christine Sandin, who's come to several of our meetings on behalf of the Sunset Center, participate with our Community Activities Commission. So regardless of whether or not it's, you know, me watching the contract or Chip watching the contract, we'll still be actively engaged with whoever's running the Forest Theater. If that makes sense.
All right, public comment?
I, I raised my hand. Did you see it?
Hi.
On mine, I'm Joe.
My head. Well, it's been raised the whole time. It never went away from the first time. So I wasn't.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I didn't know I had to do anything else with it. But, uh, is it all right to comment now?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, Ashley, uh, you and Leslie. That's a marvelous report that you just made. And also, uh, I didn't know if you're aware that the, uh, uh, there's a public service, a calendar with our local NPR station, KAZU, and they do have a calendar listing. And I have a question, uh, what is the Citizens Academy? What does that mean?
Um.
I'll send across the thing. I'll get, sorry, sorry.
Dale?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm waiting for a public comment, but I'll mute myself.
Um, I'm going to let Dale comment. Um, Joe, I'm trying to be better about, um, just like city council waiting until after all of the public comments have been received.
Okay, okay, great.
So I'll, I'll circle back around to you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dale.
So, sorry that we've been negligent after we were, I think we're the first ones to volunteer at the farmer's market. We haven't been back. We've been working outside your office here. So, uh, I will, uh, I'll sign up and come back. Maybe, whatever your next opening is, we'll take.
Great.
But I can do that. I can do that on the side. Um, there were a lot of things I was going to comment on. It sort of went a long time without a public comment. So, and I don't have any notes, but, uh, one exciting thing is, uh, to see Vista Lobos coming alive perhaps in the near future. So I'm working with Cleve and we've sponsored a new refrigerator, which I guess is a big deal there. So that's arriving Thursday. So there are some things moving along there and as we find other opportunities, we'll be happy to help out. And, uh, lots of other things, but I'm, I'm going over to Forest Theater. We're working on the gas fire pit conversions. We're putting a sidewalk with Leo outside the restroom so they can socially distance. So that's happening on the 24th, which we're sponsoring with Carmel Gives and, uh, lots of other good things. Lots of exciting things happening and we love your plan and we're happy to be part of it.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, Ashley, did you want to address a quick?
Yeah. So the quick, uh, the Citizens Academy, Joe, um, want to work on renaming it, but basically it's something that, um, that we want to launch that will, um, help our citizens who have been residents for a number of years or who are new to the community, understand, um, the functions of all the city departments and the city council and our boards and commissions and how they can participate in municipal government process or volunteer to be on a commission or volunteer with one of our um, community groups, um, where things are. Um, so part of that would be a walking tour to see where the police department is and Public Works and the library buildings and City Hall. Um, so it's kind of an all inclusive package to help people understand, um, um, how to, how to Carmel.
Thank you. All right. Well, let's move on to our last item. Receive updates and discuss the 2021 Special Events Calendar.
So, um, I'm sure you guys are all aware of the governor's announcement last week that we would all be back to normal on June 15. Um, with that announcement, I have not seen anything that clarifies what that means in terms of large scale gatherings such as those that we put on every year. I've seen how it addresses, um, in some cases, um, conferences and small private gatherings on private property. Um, or small gatherings on public property, but nothing to the extent of what we do. So I don't know what this return to normal June 15th means for our special events. Um, I will be continuing to obsessively track it, especially once our tier system goes away. If you take a look at the tier system as it stands now, we're an orange tier. The closest I can see to what we are doing in terms of Sandcastle Contest, um, the, um, city birthday parade, our tree lighting event is festivals. Um, that is, you know, something happening on public property that's not a ticketed event, that's open to everybody. Um, it's not really an event venue because it's just public property. Um, and those aren't allowed right now, all the way through yellow tier. So if you look at all of the different tiers in the state, so I am going to keep waiting for the state to clarify that and I'll keep coming back to you with whatever I know or don't know. I think we should continue on this spring with the plans that were proposed by Donna and John in terms of, um, events up through the Fourth of July. Um, thank you all for volunteering, um, up through, um, the, uh, for the farmer's market giveaways up through the Fourth of July. Um, and thank you for, for, to Donna and Linda for kicking that off. Um, I did know, actually Leslie noticed an oversight. We did not include Father's Day originally. So I know, and we have a father on our commission. So I did add in Father's Day because I think that's important. I have a father. And I think that he should be acknowledged. So we added in Father's Day. So if anybody's interested in being out there for Father's Day, it's the same. I'll resend the link out to everybody. And, um, and we'll have something done for Father's Day as well. Um, we do, so our next, um, our next giveaway day at the farmer's market is Mother's Day. I'll be working with Raul, um, to do some small bouquets, um, with our flower vendors so that those, um, can be giveaways for the farmer's market. So we're keeping it all local and keeping it in our markets. So something small that we can hand out to people to take to their moms. Or if they're moms, they can just have to enjoy, to thank them for being moms. Um, and then after that, it is Memorial Day. And so we were proposing to hand out U S flags. Um, Father's Day will figure out. And then for Fourth of July, um, we'll need to do, um, Leslie and I will work on kind of a, because that one's bigger and John and Donna's plans for that with the, um, band on the flatbed, we're a little more complex than just doing farmer's market giveaway. She and I've started talking about that. So we have some ideas that we'll bring forward to you that are more fully fleshed out for that July 4th day. we'll bring forward to you that are more fully fleshed out for that July Fourth Day and for the Thursday giveaway at the farmer's market. And if anybody, as as we're going through these giveaways too, in concert with our efforts to be more sustainable, if you come across anything in your travels as a human that you think would be good for a giveaway that you want us to look into that are more sustainable, I know, I would love to hear about it. We did include on this calendar, you know, handing out beads and pinwheels and stickers, which I don't think are that sustainable. They're popular, but not as sustainable. And any other options we have that aren't just the, I mean, one of the things on the sustainable websites are those little, you can get them in pretty much any shape that you want, but there are those little cards that have the seeds in them that you can just plant in your garden. So that's that's one of the big things that I've seen, which isn't as exciting as a star shaped bead necklace for Fourth of July. So.
Do we have, do we have issues with, sorry, two things, real quick, Ash, on on Fourth of July? With the June 15th potential change in restrictions, does that, do we, should we be thinking about the flatbed trucks? I know we had an issue with like trumpets or instruments that involve?
Yeah, we're still gonna have restrictions. Yeah, it's it's the June 15th, I think, didn't didn't help anything because musicians and live music players I know, having talked to the Sunset Center with their next iteration, like what does that look like and how far apart? The audience has to be from people who are playing instruments of, you know, different varieties. That's a whole thing. And so, yes, the flatbed thing will will, there may be issues with it, but I'm not sure yet. But we'll plan, we'll we'll see what we can plan. And if we have to scrap out at the last minute, we will. Or if we aren't sure and we don't think we can do it, but we still want to have people on notice, we'll we'll try that route too.
Okay, perfect. And then obviously sustainability, you know, I think it's a great point. That's been brought up here, you know, maybe one thought would be like working with the local, one of the vendors to bake like cookies with Fourth of July theme or something. I don't know. I'm just trying to think out loud.
Something like that or giving away blueberries and strawberries that are red and blue or something like that. Yes, I think we we need outside of the box like that and look to our farmer's market vendors or if there's, you know, I can't believe I didn't think of it now, but maybe reaching out to Echo Carmel and seeing if they have any thoughts about that since there are sustainable business in town and they've got, you know, reusable cleaning cleaning supplies and things like that. They may have other avenues or other ways to think about this too. And that's what I have for this item. Yeah, Donna.
Well, obviously, I'm sitting here, all of us thinking about sustainability. And it either has to be something you can compost, consume, plant. And and again, I was just thinking of Eskimo pies on a stick. They do come with a stick and with a wrapper, but it's something you can consume. And we, you know, that's that's what we're looking at. If you go to sustainability. Even if Dixie cups, you still have a cup and a wood spoon. So it's going to be, you know, it's really gotta be thinking hard. When I agree, I stopped buying paper plates. I stopped, but there were things I personally did to work on sustainability. So, you know, it's 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 good, but it's limiting. So it's got, and same as candy. But next year, Linda and I can make 120 colored real eggs and give them out. Well, I thought if you give a dozen eggs to 12 people and tell them to color them, hello. It's, we're not talking on, you know, and you can buy them at Costco for not much money.
For jelly beans.
But then they have to, eggs are already packaged. You know, that's the other issue. And if you if you go for cookies, you have to order them, you should order them from a local bakery and they have to be wrapped because the women's club gives out cookies. And they have to be wrapped or put in a baggie. So you're, you know, we're, I think we've, we're on the right track. But it would be easy, but it almost has to be consumable or plantable.
And a lot of people don't like their kids eating lots of jelly beans or lots of candy or cookies.
But they like ice cream. They like, I mean, we used to sell ice cream at the pops at the Naval Postgraduate and we just, they like ice cream. Even if you sold them for a quarter.
I mean, just cookies and candy too, but sometimes their parents don't.
Yeah, so we, well, we'll keep, we'll keep talking about it and we'll loop in our, loop in our people that we know are experts in sustainability, like Anyaz, who's our environmental compliance manager and see if there's anybody out there who's got thoughts that's not just ice cream, because even ice, yeah, ice cream, like an It's It, the best ice cream sandwich has a plastic around it. No, but even any efforts that we can make
Right.
are a step in the right direction, I think. So we might not be 100% this year, but we will, we'll get there and we're making make the effort.
All right, shall we open this up to the public? Public comment on anything? All right.
This is Ellen. I have a question. I don't know if this is sustainable or not, but this is something that I give away in one of our events on Fourth of July. And it's these little pins. Let's see, yeah. And people like those because they don't have them and then they wear them. And another art project that we do, which is paper plates, so, and you do a pop up, a little American flag and the kids decorate it, which might not be or doable in in our climate right now.
We can look into it. I don't think anything's necessarily, I mean, there are some things that are clearly all plastic, take those off, but again, it's a good conversation to start and have and a good goal as part of our strategic plan. And we can really test the waters with the giveaways at our farmer's market for how we do these things.
Okay, so next, items for the next agenda.
So we'll have, our next meeting is one of our special meetings. So I won't bring the strategic plan back then. We've been keeping those meetings open for any developments regarding our special events. One of the things I would like to bring before all of you that came up while Leslie and I were working on preparing for the Mother's Day giveaway is a little bit of branding for our commission so that people know who we are and why we're doing what we're doing. So a nice banner for us and nice aprons for our giveaway. So a banner that we have, that's kind of our standard that we fly regardless of what the holiday is. And then we can have additional posters that we'll work on as part of these efforts. But I'd like to bring forth to all of you, and I don't think it will be ready for the the Mother's Day, that will be cutting it close, but for this next meeting, I would like to bring forward to you, like three options for you to take a look at in terms of typeface. And here, it's gonna, it's gonna be simple. It's not gonna be anything that's too crazy. We'll wanna look like we're a part of the city of Carmel, which we are. But just some options for all of you to take a look at. And then we'll, we'll move that forward. So everything should be, unless they can really fast track it for for that Mother's Day at the farmer's market, we'll definitely have it in place for Memorial Day. So I'd like to add that on. And then, of course, the review of where we are in terms of special events. If there's any new developments there. I won't have any announcements from council meetings then, but I will for our regular meeting.
How about the Leadership Academy? Like, have they got artists for all their hearts or, you know, maybe?
We're in process with that right now. And right now, we're working on finalizing the proposed locations that they put forth. So I'll be working with Yvonne on that in the coming weeks.
Okay.
I'll bring back an update at our next regular meeting. How's that?
All right, that's great. And then maybe an update again on the June 15th opening of the world, you know, does that mean City Hall just opens the doors and everybody just, the library opens the doors and everybody's just happy again or, right?
Yeah, so I'll bring back facilities opening update and what that means for us at our next regular meeting. So for this special meeting coming up, it will be focused solely on if there's any changes or any further clarification on that June 15th date and what that means for events that we hold. And then any updates that we have regarding our efforts at the farmer's market. And then consideration of what our new logo will be. And then at the regular meeting in May, I'll do an update on Carmel Hearts. We'll hopefully be able to almost finalize the strategic plan. I think we should be pretty much done with it by then. An update on city facilities and then I'll have an update for you all on a couple of items I have on the, tentatively on the agenda for the May council meeting regarding Car Week. And then the final, the final adoption of that special events ordinance. So I'll have a verbal update for you all on those things.
Great. All right. Thank you, everyone, for attending this morning. It was great to see you all and see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.